Commissioner Heiburger here, and they're also available in our county auditor's office anytime during regular business hours. If you need a listening device, please see one of the county staff. And if you forgot your phone in the car, that's a good place for it. If you're not, just turn it off, or put it on silent mode, anyway. Again, call our meeting to order and look for a motion to approve our agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have two different meeting minutes. We have a regular commission meeting on December 7th. Look for a motion to approve those meeting minutes. So moved. Benega.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Special commission meeting on December 14th. Approve those minutes. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bills to be paid, $4,037,000, yes, $4,037,761.32. Pay the bills.
Second.
Any comments?
Just that, again, the majority of this is motor vehicle fees that we remit back to the state.
Seems to be a better, there should be a better way to do that than us collecting it, sending it, they send it, but that's a different conversation to be had. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have reports. We have the sheriff's report for November. We have the registered of deeds statement of revenue for November. The auditor's financial reports for November. The Manyaha County coroner report for September. Manyaha Highway monthly construction projects update and the county 4-H impact report. All those are available in that book. And we'll move on to personnel actions and look for a motion to approve routine personnel actions. Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Routine personnel is approved. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. I have a few items for you. The first is to request a salary rate increase for Carmen Cassin, a variable hour juvenile correctional worker, to $19.70 an hour effective December 25th. Just as background, Carmen has worked for us for 10 years on a full-time basis. The reason for the request for the adjustment is to more appropriately reflect those over a decade of experience. And Jamie's here, if you have any questions.
Questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then we have updates to our employee handbook.
I've attached for you a copy of the revisions that we're requesting, and it's to update the handbook section 10.1 on holidays effective December 21st. The reason for this, that red lines look pretty extensive, but really what we're trying to do is just extend the time and a half variable hour shift holiday pay benefit to employees of the sheriff's office. Right now, it applies to JDC and Safe Home, so we're just extending it to those variable hour shift employees as well.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Bender, second by Barth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And the third, personnel action resolution establishing elected official department head annual salaries for 2022.
This was discussed two weeks ago at your earlier December commission meeting. The resolution before you reflects the salary adjustments that you discussed then, which is a 5% adjustment for all people who are currently holding an office. And then, again, the base rates, which are set according to the approach we've been using for setting up the base salaries for other department heads in a comparable range.
With the exception of the commission, which we sent to the first of the year.
Exactly true.
So this does two things. It sets the minimum in case we should lose somebody, but it also sets the actual.
That's correct.
Okay. Up for a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Barth, second by Bender. All those, oh, no, roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Kersky.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
No applications for abatement, no notice and request, no planning and zoning notices, but we do have a petition for compromise of lien, two different DPNOs. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning, commissioners. Melinda Storey, Commission Office. The request on this compromise of lien is to compromise it and release it in full with no payment. The petitioner was in the process of purchasing a $200,000 governor's house through Southeastern Development and Foundation on December 14th, but discovered that the two liens would need to be satisfied before she could move forward. Lien DPNO 38926, in the amount of $1,804.61, represents $1,271.37 in poor relief, $473 in legal fees for the lienee, and $102.4 in legal fees for children. Two payments have been made on that lien, totaling $40. Lien DPNO 82645, in the amount of $3,717.30, represents $1,803.30 in legal fees for the lienee, and $2,824 in legal representation for the children. Eighteen payments have been made, totaling $910. The petitioner did state the circumstances which led to the liens in her narrative, but was confused on whether she was fully responsible for the full amount of the liens that were filed jointly with the other parents on the children's lien fees. I've made notes, of course. She is currently employed and did provide two recent paychecks showing an average net pay of $1,400 bi-weekly. Her 2020 income taxes indicate wages of $30,206, with a refund of $5,630, and claims only one dependent, a qualifying child. Her application lists assets totaling $25,633.43 and $14,736.29 in liabilities. She is here, if you have any questions for her.
We'll start. Does anybody have questions for Melinda? She does a great job of putting these together. Any questions on any of the details? Commissioner Barth.
Melinda, I think that there was some outside legal fees on this, or something like that, that was ordered by the judge?
Whatever fees she had related to court-ordered payments, we're taken care of already and are not part of this lien. None of these are court-ordered lien fees.
Thank you.
Good question. Any others? All righty. I'm going to invite the applicant or the petitioner, if you'd like to add anything to the narrative. You don't need to identify yourself. You can just stand where you are, and you can just say, "I'm here for questions," or if you'd like to say anything else to add to what we already have in front of us, you're sure welcome to do that, so.
I would just like to say that this house means everything. It means stability. I was embarrassment to the community, my kids and myself, and the last nine years I've been trying to make that wrong a right. And I've been in recovery this entire time. I've worked at my job since getting out of prison, and I continue to be a part of society. And this house means, it means family dinners for me and my kids and their husbands and grandkids.
Very brave of you to come up and talk about it, and I congratulate you on the last nine years. It seems like you've done a good job. I don't know if any of the commissioners have any questions of you or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, it does seem, you have an interesting narrative. It does seem like you do have some assets that you could make an additional payment with. Would you consider making an additional payment?
I would consider making whatever is recommended of the.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Could you take into consideration that one of the parents to the children has passed away, and he is on some of my poor relief funds and the children's court fees?
So the total compromise would be roughly $5,500, is that right, Melinda?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Heiburger.
So a lot of these are poor relief and rent, and some of them are court, public defender costs to dealing with the children. And there's several people listed as partial responsibility for some of those liens. And so I'd be in favor of some kind of payment. You know, I think we recognize the fact that she's worked really hard, and that putting her in a house is a positive for all of us, because then that's paying us property taxes, and it's putting her in a more stable situation. I tried to dig through this and figure out what sounds like a fair amount. She's definitely made payments, which we also look at. That's one thing that somebody that takes this responsibility and has made payments in the past. I struggle with the dollar amount, because I'm not sure. So I guess I would be somewhere between, I'm going to throw a number, and then I'd appreciate some help, somewhere between $500 and $700. So I would appreciate some input, because I really, I worked on this on a piece of paper, and I just couldn't come up with a dollar amount for sure that I felt like followed everything I was trying to track, so.
If I could, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
But $500 was the number that was in my head, Commissioner, and, you know, and basically about two weeks from being homeless, the way things look. So I'm all in favor of, as you said, making things work here. Is there anybody else, I'm sorry, we can, some other parties are partially responsible for some of these funds. Do we know how and how we could shift some of that lien over to those people?
The lien fees related to the legal representation for the children are already recorded on each of the other parents.
Okay.
So the object here is that to try and recover from any one of them, and then if it had been recovered, it would have been removed from each of the individuals.
Okay, but waiving them from her would not remove them from them.
From the others, no, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
I was going to, I was going to clarify that, and that, and the fact that parents are jointly responsible for costs, it's not one or the other, it's both. And that's, and that typically we accept about half of what is due, just to give everyone in the room and watching remotely an idea of what we would typically expect in this situation, because these are taxpayer dollars that we are dealing with here. And, and so there is some, we have responsibility to look out for all the taxpayers that benefit, because, and we have a lot in liens that are outstanding. It's always, we do appreciate when people pay, but it's always confusing and a little frustrating to me that people come at this situation where they're over a barrel, and then we end up being in a situation where we look like the bad guy if we don't take less than what we would normally take because of the situation the person's in. And so I do appreciate what you have done, and I admire it dramatically. But I want you to understand the situation that we're in here as well, and that we have responsibilities as well. So $500 is honestly lower than I was thinking. I'm not sure that I wouldn't agree with that, but it's significantly lower than what we would normally expect in this circumstance.
Are you pointing at me?
I was.
Well, I guess, maybe my rationale's not great, but the $5,500, if we divided that in half like we normally do, would be paid between both of the parties involved. So if we did that and split $5,500 down to the $27.50 as half, and then have the applicant pay $13.75, which is half of that amount, then I would be comfortable making that rational kind of conversation.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has made payments, and I believe that, I really do like that a lot, as Commissioner Bender pointed out, that they haven't just ignored this responsibility. And to her other point, being over the barrel, this property is supposed to close on the 27th. And, you know, I wish that this could have come in on, you know, June 21st instead of December 21st, or whatever we are today. And I think, actually, Gerald, that's a little high for me. I think that $500 is on the upper end of where I would want to go, and I'll make a motion for $500.
Motion for $500?
Would you like me to make a second in your behalf? Because I'm not ready to.
Make a second, and maybe take additional comments, and we can always make a substitute motion, too.
I'll make a second in behalf of Commissioner Kersky.
Okay. If I could make some comments, you know, a lot of these things come up last minute. All of us, they do the last check, and they say, "Oh, you have this lien." And they didn't know it until, I mean, she was supposed to close on the 15th last week. And, you know, three days before closing, "Oh, you got this lien at the county, you got to settle that." You know, it's not like we've had all this time. The plan, should have you known it was there? Yes.
I did know that I owed the city $200 when I paid my last payment. I was told that I only had $200 left to pay off the debt that I owed to the city.
Okay, okay, so.
City or county are you talking? Because.
County.
Yeah.
So the county payment, that's okay, okay.
Yep. So I do see the kind of last-minute scramble to get these things done. But I also know that if you don't close on this home, we're probably going to see, I'm suspecting more poor relief and other bills just to help you to get to where you need to be. So my thought is, by getting this done, we're going to avoid future debt, future liens by the county. So I'd rather take the, what I can get now and not have to worry about future, more bills later. So I would support a motion for $500, just based on that, because looking at what you have available, I don't know where, I'm sure you can find somewhere to come up with it, but I think that's a reasonable amount for where we're at, so. So we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments?
I would wonder, Commissioner Bender, is that, if you have any more thoughts? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I just did.
Yeah, no, I know. I mean, and it's, it is difficult to know exactly what the right number is, given the assets that you seem to have available to you, based on the information that we've been provided. And the, you know, the goal here, these are always so difficult. I mean, when I was first became a commissioner, I was always amazed at that these were always the most difficult thing on our agenda every single time. And so I, given the circumstances, I was, I was originally thinking of $1,000, is what I was originally thinking of. But, you know, like I said, I'm not sure in the grand scheme of things, in the situation that we're here with today, that I think I could support $500. And wouldn't be my preference. I still think this is a system that needs improvement. But given the circumstances, I think I can support $500.
Other comments? Well, I frankly agree that there's probably a better settlement, but I also feel like I don't want to be the one to kick poor people out of their house, and that's going to happen in about 10 days if we don't do something tonight, today. So I will agree to the $500 and move forward. So call the roll.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kersky.
Aye. Motion carries five to nothing. Melinda will help you out with this, okay? Thank you.
Very much.
Commissioner Kersky, I have a clarification question. Melinda, I have a clarification question.
Pardon me, go ahead.
So will it wipe out, we didn't really say where this $500 was going. Will it wipe out all the poor relief, release her from all of poor relief, and then will it be distributed accordingly with the court costs? Because we still have other people that are involved on the other side.
This will, this will zero out both of the liens presented here today. It will not zero out the fees that are recorded in the other parents, with the other parents.
But how does the $500 applied, I think is what your question is.
That's, I was wondering, so it just, it just zeros out, and it still leaves the rest against them?
It just is accepted as payment and zeroes out both of the liens.
Okay.
That is what you wanted, both of the liens, correct?
And it just leaves it on the other people's names still?
Unless they decide to come before the commission and request a compromise as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
All righty. Before we go into our regular business, we do take the opportunity for public comments. So if anybody is here that would like to address the commission about a non-agenda item, now is your opportunity. So please, come forward, identify yourself, and we'll give you about four or five minutes.
Thank you, thank you. And my name is Teresa Pesch. I am a resident in Sioux Falls District 15. And my main reason for being here today is to expand the communication between policymakers in the county.
Can, ma'am, can you get a little closer to the microphone, so we make sure everybody can hear you? Thank you.
My main reason for being here is to expand the communication between policymakers, say, within the county like yourselves, and also within the state. And it's expanding communication with the, with the citizens of the region and of the state. So I'm here because I belong to a few different grassroots organizations that primarily my purpose here today is to talk about the upcoming election for 2022. And it's about keeping the election system more honest, and also to have voters, legal registered voters, being the ones who are actually voting, and to have our information not easily hacked. Because with electronic voting systems, it seems that the company that offers the system to the policymakers, so I'll say such as ESNS, which is Electron Systems and Software. So it's ESNS, and they have Express Votes is one of their, their items that they sell. But they also make themselves the people who make sure that the security system works. And so one reason I'm bringing this up is because many of us believe that it needs to be a third-party system that actually looks into, can the system actually be hacked? Because the person who's selling the system is saying it's not going to be hacked, but we need to ask that a third party comes in that's actually in a business to look into different hacking systems. And so that's where the two articles that I had handed out, they briefly go over that. There's a lot more articles, but I figured these were two relevant ones for today. And also is, one of my main items is that the Manyaha provisional budget, which increased from $371,000 in 2018, and it went to $830,000 for 2022. So I understand it right now is that the e-poll books, electronic poll books, aren't on serious consideration for right now, but I would like that they, that they aren't on consideration at all. So that's why I'm here. I'm just trying to be proactive instead of reactive. So the e-poll books are just as vulnerable, or if not more, than electronic voting machines, because the chips that are on the machines are actually made by the manufacturer, who also has access to passwords, and actually even the main password that's in the computer. Also is that what's called the Intranet, which could be the e-poll books in the room, say, for the precinct on those particular days, is that information could be sent to the auditor office. The auditor office could send it to the Secretary of State. So that may be called the Intranet, which doesn't seem as hackable as the Internet, but it actually is. And there was one more item. It's actually on the, on the, I think it's two pages here. And it's just a short article, a brief article, but my main point for this one was because on the e-poll books, I'm not exactly sure if, if Manyaha County was thinking of buying the e-poll books, but there's different information that could be on them, including the voter name, driver's license number, address. And so these e-poll books can be easily hacked, and that's our information, that's our private information, that can be easily hacked by people wherever. And especially this day and age, if I'm voting for a certain political party, I don't want somebody else to be privy to who I'm voting for. So whether it be because of the society, society that we live in today, is sometimes people get upset over the, over things like one's personal freedom. And I just feel that our personal information and our political ideals shouldn't be privy to hackers.
Teresa, we appreciate you being here. You've been at five minutes now, and I'm sure this is an issue we'll see and hear a lot more about, so we appreciate you bringing this forward and your involvement and your, again, I'm sure it's something we'll hear more and more about, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else here for public comment? Okay, well, oh, please.
My name is Gary Meyer. I live in Hartford Township, and I think all of you are aware of the city of Hartford and their plans to develop a regional sewer facility. And I'm here because I'm looking for some help. I have visited with Dean personally from the county level. I've visited with Scott Anderson from zoning and planning. I've visited with my Hartford township, and the answer is the same. I have no representation. Hartford went about purchasing land a mile and a half outside their city limits very quietly, and then they quickly drew a line around it and called it Hartford City. They did this for the purpose of avoiding any public opposition. None of my neighbors, I live outside the city of Hartford, not very far outside the Hartford boundaries. None of my neighbors nor myself were notified. We weren't aware that this was happening, and so we had no chance to voice our opinion that we did not want this. And not only is the city of Hartford planning to put their sewage system out in our neighborhood, and it's in a location that not one resident of Hartford will be able to see or smell it. They put it outside of Hartford, on the other side of the interstate. They purchased a little plot of land, and that's the only land on the other side of that interstate. If you look at it from aerial view, it does not look like it's part of Hartford. But now they've invited four other communities and two townships to also dump their sewage in our neighborhood. And they did this for this whole purpose of helping them pay for their fac- And they did this for the sole purpose of helping them pay for their facility so they could enjoy lower sewer rates. And yet, those of us that live in that neighborhood, we cannot even, we cannot even use that facility. All we can do is look at it. It's very frustrating to me. I feel like I have no representation. Hartford has two other options. They could put this facility at their existing lagoon site, but obviously, they do not want it in their neighborhood. I completely understand. But the other option they have is to join forces with the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County, who already has a facility built, overbuilt with the anticipation of having these communities join them in a regional plant. And I would ask that, I would ask that you consider what they're doing. I feel like it is not right. They're dumping their sewage system and inviting others to dump on the neighborhood that has no say in what goes on. I would ask that you call them back to the negotiating table, sharpen your pencils, and hammer out a deal that's good for everybody, not just the city of Hartford. It would benefit the plant that's already built, that Sioux Falls uses. It would benefit the county and the township, and it'd also benefit the city of Hartford. But you need to negotiate with them. And so, I'm just asking you to please consider that option, and if you can help us out, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All righty. Anybody else here for public comments?
Not today.
Not today? Okay, Commissioner. Moving on to regular business, we have a briefing on medical cannabis dispensary applications. Auditor Kite.
Morning, Commissioners Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. Yeah, so, as you recall, back in early October, the county adopted an ordinance that allowed for the issuance of one medical cannabis dispensary license. So, the Auditor's Office at that time set a timeline for accepting those applications for the dispensary. So, we accepted applications from November 29th through December 13th, at which we received a total of four applications. And then on December 13th, the Auditor's Office posted a notice about the selection process for the, on the county's website. We held a lottery last Friday on December 17th at 9:00, where we chose the order in which those four applications would be considered. We have 60 days to review those applications after the lottery, which would bring us to, excuse me, February 15th. And we'll, at that point, or possibly before then, we'll provide the commission a, the applications that we think are, meet the ordinance and allow you to make a decision on how to go forward. So, this is really just a briefing on, on the process and, uh, any questions you might have.
Where the first one drawn, where is that location for that dispensary? Do we know?
I believe it's on Arrowhead Parkway, right out on the west, east side of Sioux Falls. I don't know the exact location, but I have to consult with others, I guess.
Any other questions? Okay, this is just a briefing only, no, no action taken. So, there will be action in the future. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Public hearing to declare the property legally described as east quarter, the northeast quarter, except covert addition section, et cetera, Humboldt Township, a public nuisance and act South Dakota codified law 211006. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. I am Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Yes, this property is addressed at 25735 459th Avenue. We received a complaint earlier in the year. This property was brought before you on October 19th to determine a public nuisance. At that time, we went through the photos, and I showed you that there was great improvement from the initial complaint to the time in October, where there were a handful of things that were still on the property to clean up. At that time, the county commission requested for staff to review the property again in December. I visited the property on December 15th and found the property was largely the same as what it was in October. So, there are still some inoperable unlicensed vehicles and abandoned property on the, the site. Inoperable vehicles and abandoned property are specifically required to be placed within an enclosed building according to the public nuisance ordinance. South Dakota codified law does allow the county to declare a public nuisance and clean up the property at the code of, at the cost of the property owner. And I'll go through a few photos here for you. So, this is the prop, site of the property. It's about a mile and a half northeast of Humboldt. There's kind of the farm portion of it. These are some of the early photos that initiated the complaint. And you can see that there are cars tipped on the side and other metal and debris. And throughout the summer, I visited the site several times. Towards the end of the summer, some progress started happening. You can see some of the photos here in August, and some of the vehicles have been removed. And then this would be their, the site visit in October. So, I, I visited the site on the 15th again, like I said. I have some similar pictured angles, side by side, October on, on the left and December on the right. You can see that largely speaking, the property has remained very similar. So, the planning and zoning department is requesting that the Minnehaw County Commission declare the property legally described as east quarter, the northeast quarter, except covert addition in section 11, Township 102 North, Range 52 West in Humboldt Township, a public nuisance and an act South Dakota codified law 21106. And I can take any questions. I believe the property owner is here today, so he can come speak to it as well.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Any questions of Kevin?
How many acres is this site?
I, I believe it's 20 acres total, and most everything is right there in the farm that doesn't spread off.
Other questions for Kevin? Okay. I'd like to give the property owner a chance to explain his story and the situation that we have here. So, good morning, sir.
Good morning. Okay. All the vehicles are already gone.
Step to, yeah, thank you.
All the vehicles are gone. The last few weren't even mine that were there. The guy coming got them. Was it Wednesday last week?
Okay.
So, all the vehicles are gone. The only thing I have a question for you on.
Use the microphone, sir. This is going to be broadcast on television.
The only thing I, that's left there from what I got from his thing is he wants a decapitated shed or whatever. But my kids use that for their 4H projects.
Okay. So, the vehicles are all gone?
Vehicles are all gone.
Questions of the property owner?
And he gave me this one too on the, there's a grain bin there. But the guy, that's already sold too. The guy said, just give him some time to get it out of there while they're permitting.
Sir, are you running any sort of business on this property?
No, not, well, calves, cows.
Okay. Farming.
We did some scrap cars earlier this year.
Okay. Okay.
But everything went to Sioux City.
Okay. Any other questions, the property owner, Commissioner Hamburger?
Can we have Kevin go out there this week? Kevin, can you go out there this week and come back to us next week and tell us if it's actually all cleaned up?
Okay. So, Commissioner Bender?
I would just say that we gave you a lot of time to clean this up. So, for you to do it at the very last minute is, is frustrating. And it's a, and it's, we're having to use additional county resources to go back out. And if you've sold that building that is destroyed, that should have been removed by today. I mean, this isn't the first time you've been before the commission, and we gave you a significant amount of time to clean up the property. So, I'm, I'm less inclined to be sympathetic the second time around.
Earlier, we had action, and there's two difficult things that the commission does in my mind, the DPOs and, and public nuisances. Both very challenging subjects to tackle. So, I'm going to be looking for a motion either to delay action for a week, to give Kevin the opportunity to go out there, or maybe two weeks, whatever, or to declare it a public nuisance.
I'm wondering what my fellow, other fellow commissioners' thoughts are. Because that might make their motion.
Can I ask one question for clarifying? And this might be a question for Kevin. Can you explain about the building that he's asking for additional time with no definite date as to when it would be removed? And help us to understand that part of this puzzle?
And the 4H thing? I didn't under, I'm sorry, I couldn't understand the 4H thing, so.
Use the microphone.
Kevin could answer what we're talking about.
I'm going to add, apparently, it didn't make it very well. Good picture in the December photos. Let's see if I can find one in the earlier photo sets. So, right there on the top-left corner, you can see that there's like a, a storage container that's like leaning, slanted on that photo. And then in the aerial photos, you can see there's a grain bin that is tipped over that is a concern. If wind was to pick up, it could easily roll away.
Is that, is that the building you were talking about that was supposed to be removed?
Yes, so it'd be that grain bin, and then there's like a storage container that's being used as like a, a building. So, that'd be the two buildings.
Kevin, is this zoned egg?
Yes, it's zoned egg.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Being just 20 acres, though, it's not taxed as egg.
As egg, but like, the point of my question, Commissioner, is if it's zoned egg, an egg operation, cat, you know, some calves, that type of thing, not a problem. If you're running a business dismantling cars, that's a problem. It's, you're not zoned to do that on this property, and your neighbors don't have the expectation that that type of activity doesn't occur here. I respect private property rights, but I also respect that the neighbors have an expectation of some enjoyment of their property, knowing based on zoning what can happen and what can't happen. So, if the cars are cleaned up, that's great. If we need some time, I'm going to look to the commission to make the motion.
So, for the property owner, the, the grain bin, what is the date that that will be removed?
Microphone.
I'm not exactly sure yet. When the guy wants to have a spot to set it, it's going down by a guy to Lenox, south of Lenox there.
Can you contact him and ask him to remove it this week?
It probably won't get done this week. Can you give me three weeks and I'll make sure that it's done in three weeks? And then the shed there, it's just a spot where my kids use in the summertime for their 4H calves.
Can you point to what shed we're talking about?
The one that he keeps saying is a storage shed right behind that bin there.
I still don't know, Kevin. Can you please point it out?
Right, there.
Say it again, because my map is, I'm trying to figure out where this is at.
And Kevin, can you explain why you think that needs to be removed?
So, as, so the shed is actually like a storage container. And this, as a storage container, it's not a, like, permitted building that's being used for like a.
It's a shipping container?
It's a shipping container, yeah.
That's just a cow shelter is all it is.
Okay. Well, I guess I have not walked up close. Maybe it is a, a structure, but it appears from the, where I can see it as a shipping container, so, right here.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
Sir, do you have any problem with Kevin walking in onto your property and looking at this? You do have a problem. So, you don't want him to do that?
I don't want him to do that. I'll take pictures of it or whatever.
And again, I respect your rights as a property owner, sir.
So, if we give you until January 11th, and we have Kevin come out and look at the property at that time, all the cars will be gone and the grain bin will be gone?
Mr. Chairman, he's not using the microphone.
We can't hear you.
All the stuff that he said was abandoned or whatever, like, because there was a pallet of shingles. We took them and got rid of them, hauled them away, and then there was little piles of iron and stuff, and that's already been hauled away too, so.
The question is, will the vehicles all be gone in that?
In the shed, in the grain bin.
The grain bin.
And the bin, grain bin be gone by January 11th is what I believe you're looking at for a date.
Yeah, he said three weeks.
Have it checked again to see if that's.
If it's not, we're taking it.
Okay.
Yeah, there will not be any other options at that point.
Nope, that's it. We're done.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to defer to January 11th?
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Chairman?
Commissioner?
I'm getting a little more crabby about this one, but I'll support the motion.
All righty. Roll call vote.
Hamburger.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries four to nothing, January 11th. We will be looking at this again. All righty. Moving on to item 12, and Commissioner Bender said she needs to be recused from this action.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think we need Commissioner Benega to come back and hear this. So, I, I wonder if we should wait a moment here if his return is imminent.
Can we do number 13 and just come back to 12 to give him a minute to show back up?
Yeah, let's go to, I'm sorry to suggest this, but let's go to 13 and resolve it quickly, I guess. Or maybe go to 14 and 15.
I'm here for 13.
Okay, so we're going to delay action on item 12 and go to item 13 until we have a, because conditional use permits require at least four commissioners, so we cannot take action without Commissioner. Here of Commissioner, or Bender, a lot of Bs, is recused. So, moving on to item 13, a motion to appoint two candidates to the planning commission board for a five-year term.
Yes, thank you. Scott Anderson, planning director. We have two terms, two planning commissioners whose terms are going to expire at the end of this month. And therefore, we need to have a full planning commission. And I've worked with the county commission office. We've advertised for the, the appointments to, to the planning commission. They were advertised pretty much through the entire month of November, and they closed on the 10th of December. We received three applications from people who are interested in serving. Those have been provided to you. Two of the, two of the three are currently on the planning commission. That would be Becky Randall and Adam Morehouser. The third is Richard Boander, and I did let him know that today would be the day that you would be considering this. So, I will ask that you consider the three candidates, and if you feel that they are the appropriate for the positions or for the planning commission, that you would appoint two of them. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, and you have their, their application sheet, so.
Are any of the applicants here?
One of them is for sure. Mr. Boander is too. I don't see Adam Morehouser, but he is farming, so maybe he's farming.
He has animals.
Yeah.
All right. Commissioners?
I would ask Commissioner Barth, because he's the one who works with these people, so.
Well, I, there are obviously two that I'm going to support. At the same time, I think we should hear momentarily from the two that are present. And I can speak for Adam Morehouser that, you know, he's a township supervisor and has cattle and that he works with, with his father.
So, I'll invite the applicants, one at a time, to come up and introduce themselves and address the commission, so.
Good morning. My name is Becky Randall. I currently serve on the commission. I live at 48031 248th Street, Del Rapid, South Dakota. I am a nurse. I am a nurse and a semi-retired farmer, I would say. I, I still farm some ground, and then some of my ground I, I rent out. I have been serving on the County Planning Commission for the past few years. I really enjoy it. I feel I have a good understanding of the needs facing that our county is facing, and along with that, as we have exponential growth with the city of Sioux Falls, working also then with the combined jurisdiction aspects of it. And we see that as we look at our other towns, too, that are all growing. We have some combined jurisdiction agreements with them. So I'm open to any questions that you might have for me.
Alrighty. Thank you, Becky.
All right, thank you.
My name is Rick Boander. I live between Brandon and Valley Springs. My address is 26268, 486th Avenue in Valley Springs. I, I grew up in Valley Springs on a farm, and in my entire life, I've been involved with some type of agriculture, either on sales or production. I built my house out there. I didn't go far in life. I moved about a mile north of where I lived, grew up. And so, I built my house there about five years ago, went through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I have, I feel like I've got very well-served from, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I just wanna offer my services, as I've been very blessed in life, and would like to offer something back to the county. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have of me.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. It's always a unique circumstance when we get three applicants for two positions. I'd like to put you all on, but of course, we can only do two. Bonnie, do you have any comments? Oh, okay. Bonnie is, I think, the Chair of the Planning Commission, correct?
Yep.
A job much sought after.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Alrighty. So I'll look for the commission, to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm very impressed with the presentation by our third candidate, and I, it's, it's, it's great to have people interested in this, because when you get the job, it's, it's difficult, as you'll see if you stick around a little bit. There are people that, no matter what the project, they're against it. You know, Gerald's Quilt Shop, we can't have it because the traffic is too heavy, et cetera. And, you know, it's like people Google quilt shops and decide what's wrong with them. But, it's, it's truly a service to be on the Planning Commission, and while I'm very respectful of our, our third candidate, I will support the ones that we have incumbent, Adam and Becky. And truly, it takes a while to season a, a new commissioner on that board. You know, I think we've had board members who went their first term without speaking. And, that's not quite true, but they didn't talk much. And look how long it took me to get to this position. Anyway, I, I, I'm going to support the two incumbents at this time, but I really urge you, should you not get it today, to stay involved and come to our meetings.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
Sure.
Motion for the two incumbents, that'd be Becky or Rebecca-
Adam.
-Randall and Adam Morehouser?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll second that motion with a comment.
Please, Commissioner.
I just wanna thank all of you that are here for your service, because I, those, your meetings go long. And they are meetings that tend to involve a lot of people being emotionally vested in the, in the issue for good reasons, but that makes the decision-making even that much more difficult. So, I'm, like Commissioner Barth, very encouraged that we have multiple people seeking public service here. I think it's a very, it's a high calling, and our whole system couldn't work if people weren't willing to get involved, so I encourage all of us to look at opportunities to get involved like this. But I will second this mo- motion. It is a high learning curve, and it's an area where I still feel like I struggle to be as knowledgeable as I should, and so I appreciate the folks that are willing to really dive deep into those issues.
Commissioner Hiberger?
I'm gonna support it too. Mr. Boander, I thank you so much for coming and, you know, you know, bringing us, you know, your words too, and I hope that you apply again, and hopefully there will be an opening. We want rural people to be vested in what's happening in the rural county, and it's important. Commissioner Barth has been doing planning and zoning for 15 years, I think, and they're right, it's a tough job, and you do really have to understand it. I've been here for, now finishing up 11 years, and it's a lot to learn. It's, and I would, same as Commissioner Bender, encourage you to start attending some of their meetings, because you'll really get a handle on what they're doing, so, yeah.
Alrighty, yes. Commissioner Barth will be ending his career on the Planning Commission, and I'm sure there'll be an arm-wrestling competition between the commissioners.
Should you be interested in replacing me, feel free to raise $50,000 and throw your hat in the ring.
Yeah. And this, yes, this commission does a heavy lift for the, the County Commission. The Planning Commission does the heavy lift on a lot of these things, so I very much appreciate the work that they do and the time that's put into it, Monday nights, first Monday of every month. So, yeah. And I think it goes to the newest commissioner.
And the senior commissioner.
Yeah, well, you were the newest, but once you're on it, you're there forever when you, when you took it, so. Anyway, we have a motion and a second for Morehouser and-
Randall.
Randall, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, sir. And moving on to the backing up to 12, a considered appeal of a decision by the county Planning Commission to approve a CUP, allowing construction of a public utility facility. Commissioner Bender is recusing herself, going back to what we just did, this is, you know, sometimes it comes back to us. Welcome, Kevin?
Yes, Kevin Hookman, again, at the County Planning Department. This is conditional use permit number 2176, to allow a public facility on the property legally described as Dig Vigs Track 1 in the east half of the northeast quarter of Section 31 Township 104 North, Range 49 West, which is Del Rapids Township. It's about three-quarters of a mile northwest of Baltic. I'll bring up the map here. The petitioner is requesting a public utility facility. In our ordinance, it has two different definitions for utility facilities. A public utility facility and a neighborhood utility facility. The difference between the two is that a public utility facility includes above-ground buildings greater than 120 square feet in size. Several structures on the proposed site do exceed the 120 square feet in size parameters, so the petitioner had to, was required to have, apply for a conditional use permit for the public utility facility. The Planning Commission heard this item on November 22nd, Planning Commission meeting. The, the item was removed from the consent agenda, and it was discussed briefly, and nobody at that meeting spoke in opposition to the item. The Planning Commission approved the conditional use permit with nine conditions, and they approved this unanimously. And the minutes in the meeting have been presented to you to have a review. I'll go over a couple of the photos here. So, they're somewhat self-explanatory. You can see that the property is a triangle shape. They're gonna be partitioning off a small rectangle out of this property to do their facility on. Some of the views, there's a hill on the one side of it. It's really close to the rivers. You can see in the, the upper-left corner, you can see the map. That was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, because the floodplain risks involved, and the applicant has acknowledged the floodplain risks, and will be raising the facility to keep it out of the 100-year flood requirements. This would be the closest house to the property located to the north. It's about 500 feet from the corner of the property. And there, there's kind of the river on the other side. I'll bring it back to the location map. The public utility facility, you'll be hearing from the petitioner a little bit more. The plan is, is to connect a natural gas line leading from a dairy into an existing natural gas line that crosses these properties. So, that's why there's gonna be this transition in this area, to have buildings to transition the two gases together. And I'm sure you'll hear more details on that, and I guess, and I'll be here for any questions, and we can move on with the hearing.
What is the appeal exactly?
So, the, the appeal was received after the meeting that listed, let's see if I can find it here. I've got a lot of papers for this particular project. Primarily, the concern was the proximity to the facility of the neighboring house to the north.
So the, the neighbor is appealing the decision. It's not the petitioner that is appealing any of the conditions?
Correct.
It's the neighbor is appealing the decision of the, okay.
Yep, and, so the, the appeal letter included the proximity, and I would, I'm sure you'll hear more. Here's the, had three different other things. Petitioner failed to sufficiently inform the Planning Commission of details of the project, and needs, number two, that needs more information to make an informed decision. And number three, the conditional use criteria set forth, and the ordinance favored denial for the conditional use permit, and that was the explanation given in the letter.
Commissioner Hiberger?
Is, is the person who's building on this, are they, do they own the property? Or are they leasing the property to build it on? And then where are they planning on putting the buildings at?
So, the, the property will be purchased by the, the applicant, and it'll be a rectangle. And the buildings will be kind of throughout the whole property. I think there's five buildings, if I recall correctly, total that'll be on the property.
So, the whole property basically is involved?
Yep.
Okay.
Or I should say, the whole property they're buying, I didn't set up, I missed it in the PowerPoint, but the site plan shows a rectangle on the north side of the property.
Okay.
And that will include the-
Like in the middle of that?
Yeah.
In the middle of 249, a rectangle, so access would be from 249?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions of Kevin? Okay. Alrighty. Moving on then, so this would be the opportunity for the petitioner, or the, I'm sorry, the, the applicant that-
Proponent.
I'm sorry?
The proponent, the proponent.
The proponent for the appeal, or the proponent for the-
The proponent of the person who, yeah, because they get the final say.
Okay, so we'll take testimony then from the people that are looking to put this structure up. Thank you.
Can we pull up the PowerPoint, please?
If you'd identify yourself, sir.
Absolutely, thank you. Jason Sutton, I'm an attorney of a Boyce Law Firm, representing Northern Natural Gas, who is one of the entities that are involved in this project. So, here, generally, here's the plan from our perspective, and, and thank you, Commissioners, for your time. It's a joint project between my client, Northern Natural Gas, and Brightmark, who is also here and represented by Mr. Taylor, Bill Taylor, as well as Mr. Duff. The general thought process for us is, I'm gonna walk through a PowerPoint, provide some comments generally. My client is the applicant. It's signed by Carly Hannigan, who's a land agent on behalf of Northern Natural Gas. Mr. Hannigan is here as well, as long as, as well as, excuse me, Joel Glantz, who's the project manager. So, in the event the Commissioners have some questions that the foolish lawyers fumble, we're in a position to have you answered by the, the project people. When I get done, I suspect that Mr. Taylor's gonna have some additional comments, and although it's a joint project, our roles are a little different from, because he represents the entity that connects with the dairies, and I've got the final transmission line. So that's how we kind of fit together. So, starting with the PowerPoint, and, and I guess before I get there, I wanna thank the Commissioners for their time this morning. I wanna thank the Planning and Zoning Commission. They've done a wonderful job, so thank you, on behalf of myself, as well as our clients. The key word from my perspective in this first slide is a renewable natural ga- gas interconnect site, and if you go to the next slide, please. Focus on renewable, because I think this is fascinating technology, and I, and I think it's important that this commission and the public understands really what we're dealing with here. Ultimately, what you're, and Mr. Taylor is much more adept at describing the technology, but essentially what this project is, is there are three dairies who are already there, who are creating manure like dairies always do, and we know. Brightmark has built technology on the facility that allows that manure to be processed and to capture the methane gas. In other words, this is natural gas, it's just going up in the air and greenhouse effects, and instead of that, it's being processed, captured, being piped to Northern Natural Gas's transmission lines, and you're gonna hear, or, well, gonna hear, I'm gonna tell you now, that that will heat up to 7,000 homes, just from the manure that was going up into the, into the sky. So that's the technology. It's renewable, because, you know, every cow I've ever seen's gonna keep pooping. So, the reality is, is that manure's gonna be generated, and we're just capturing and using a byproduct that otherwise was there. So, go to the next slide, please. General benefits, I mean, we wanted to provide for the benefit of the commission, some understanding of why this project as a whole is beneficial. I mean, it's gonna create jobs in South Dakota, there's gonna be construction jobs. It's not a lengthy construction process, I will tell you that, at least as to the interconnection here. It'll be done this winter, you're, you're talking maybe a month. So it's not gonna be torn up for a long period of time. Dairy industry, this commission has been supportive of dairies outside in the county. This is providing another revenue source for those dairies. And the reality is, we're gonna help the local communities. Infrastructure, I mean, there, there are gas pipelines that we already have, it's increasing currently what's there. This is cutting-edge technology. I mean, this is cutting-edge green renewable technology in South Dakota, in Minnehaha County, and that's what's being developed. Environmentally, one of the amazing things is, as I understand it, is it actually decreases some of the order where the existing dairies are. And separately, you know, we're harvesting greenhouse gases. So let's talk about the site. Northern Natural Gas is partnering with Brightmark to build the interconnect site, and, and we've got some pictures in a little more detail. I do wanna correct one thing, and a question from Commissioner Hiberger. We will not own that entire triangle, and I'm gonna show you in a little square exact, or a rectangle where it's at. It's an easement, so we won't own the property in its entirety.
Thank you.
It's three-quarters of a mile northwest of Baltic, and the proposed site itself is 120 by 200 feet, with eight very small buildings. And if you go to the next slide, please. So, and this slide's a little hard to see, so if any of the Commissioners need it, actually want a hard copy, I've got hard copies for all of you, but what I would say is, when you look at, first of all, the dashed lines, if you're with me, that's an existing line for Northern Natural Gas now. That's what's there. That's their transmission line, just like the interstate system. Then, the triangle piece, which Planning and Zoning referenced, you can see the little triangle with 473rd on the east side. Then, and it doesn't show up as well here, it shows up, I think, better in a color in the screens in front of you, is a little blue rectangle. First time in my life anyone's ever said they, to talk into the- First time in my life anyone's ever said they, to talk into the mic more, it's a new thing for me. That little blue rectangle is where the actual site's going to be. So, that's where the interconnection is going to be, and really what this is, is a connection of the existing pipe with the pipe that's coming from the dairies, which are a ways away. Right to the north on this map, you see a home structure, that is the landowners who are objecting to this property, it's also the picture that was referenced in zoning and planning, it's about 500 feet from the residence. So, that's the objecting parties regarding the conditional use permit directly across the road. Go to the next slide, please. So, here's a picture generally of what the site is going to look like.
If I, that's the rectangle that you referenced on the previous screen?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the rectangle I referenced in the previous slide, this fenced area is that rectangle, a- and this is what, that rendering a- and the drawings of the actual site as it's going to be. The three buildings on the upper right-hand portion, excuse me, the, the three buildings on the bottom left-hand portion, I'm looking at things backwards, if you're will, with me, that kind of make a little U shape, are the portions of the buildings that are owned by Northern Natural Gas. The other portions are going to be owned by Brightmark. That's why although we are the applicant, it's a joint project. Now, you'll note, there's going to be a six-foot security, or fence, or not security, excuse me, privacy fence, all the way around this. Separately, those trees, the intent, and there have been deposits placed already for existing trees to act as a barrier for sight and other things. We have eighteen, eight to fifteen-foot trees, it includes maple elm and spruce, so there's going to be green trees for purposes of the winter, it's not going to be just open, and that is actually what the plan is from the planned look on the construction. We go to the next slide, please. Now, this drawing and rendering here is what the anticipated view will be for the landowners from their residence. A- and I would note for you, one of the things that was provided by zoning and planning was the first picture, and there was a hill. A- and that's important, you know, we are building up the property to address flooding issues, but separately, that hill is still going to obfuscate the view from the landowners. So, this is what we expect they will see. A- and when you, and I would submit, as commissioners, think about that, in comparison to, you know, we all drive around and we see a vacant farmstead, and, and you've dealt with already today nuisance issues, a- and, so when you compare what the realities of rural South Dakota is compared to that view, I ask that you keep that in mind. We go to the next slide, please. So, this is what's actually going to be in the fence, in the site. Five small shelters and above-ground equipment. The buildings are, the largest one is 12 by 20, 8 by 16, you saw the, the pictures, that gives you some context. It's going to be a gravel base, a 40-foot by 60-foot driveway will allow parking. This is not a manned facility on a daily basis, that's important from a traffic standpoint. It's monitored 24/7. But the anticipated attendance is that people will show up perhaps once a month to inspect it. So, i- it, there's not a parking concern, and zoning and planning's already addressed that there'll be adequate off, or adequate parking on-site. The six-foot fence I mentioned, as well as the perimeter, will you go to the next slide, please? Here are some examples of shelters or the buildings that we have in other facilities and other locations, so you've got some context of what we're looking at. I mean, this is the size of a small shed, I mean, these are not huge structures. If you go to the next slide, please. Now, let's talk about the effect of this project on the adjacent landowners. I mean, we want to be good neighbors, tha- that's the reality, and the project has done a lot to try and be a good neighbor here. I showed you the view, I showed you what they're looking at, and the condition imposed by zoning and planning, and intended, and deposited, is to put the trees in, as well as the shrubs. Traffic, once the construction's done, there will be minimal, if any, existing traffic, as I indicated, it'll only be staffed generally, once a month with a person there. Odor, this is one of the concerns that's been raised by the landowners, a- and this is important, I think, for the perspective of the commission. Natural gas generally does not have an odor. Now, we all know, when you smell gas in your house, you smell rotten eggs, that's odor that's added to the gas, so that you recognize there's a leak, and you call the gas company. Generally, natural gas is completely odorless. At the interconnection site, the gas coming from the dairy to us, at Northern Natural Gas, that's not odorized. There is going to be no smell. There is a, a spent lube oil tank, that's more a Brightmark issue, as I understand, if you have questions, I'll let them ask it, but I want to assure to this commission that we have designed everything to the best availability we can. I mean, the reality is, is that pipelines are regulated extensively at the federal and state levels, and to make sure that there isn't going to be a problem for the neighbors. Go to the next slide, please. Lights. It will not be lit 24/7. It will only be lit when there is someone there, there's a switch. I tell you that, because, l- let's think about the reality, in the absence of some sort of problem or emergency, when are our staff likely going to be there to inspect it? Once a month during the day? And the lights are going to be off the rest of the time, so there is not an issue about the landowners looking across the skyline and having light pollution. Noise. Our noise analysis indicates that at the fence line, now, our fence line, then, you've got to go across the road, and over to the house, 500 feet is the nearest house from the edge of the property, but at our fence line, the noise level's going to be 70 decibels, which is the same as vacuum cleaner, according to OSHA. That's the comparable, is that, so you think about that. That's a vacuum cleaner 500 feet away in rural South Dakota with the wind blowing. A- and I realize, there are 10 days a year here where the wind doesn't blow, but there are 10 days a year where the wind doesn't blow. I mean, so, that's the noise levels that are indicated. We go to the next slide, please. Design standards. Frankly, Mr. Taylor is much more adept at walking through the nuances of 49 CFR, Part 192, in the federal regulation of pipelines, and if you have questions for him, I'm sure he will dive into it, or the rest of our staff will. What I want you to know is, highly regulated, everything is designed to the standards of the safety levels required by the federal government, or exceeding it. There are certain aspects with the design, for instance, of the pipe, where we are exceeding, depending on the location, by a multiple of the minimum requirements of what there is.
Mr. Sutton, appreciate your comments and presentation, any, any questions?
You can't, you can't cut it off.
I didn't think I was, I thought he was wrapped up.
Oh, I'm just about done.
Okay.
Hint, hint. Safety, the last concern, end up with pipelines. Here's what my takeaway is for the, the commission. The analysis that we have done, and that we're required to do, requires us to define a area of impact in the event of, God forbid, something happens. That's inside our fence. So, the reality is, is we're 500 feet from the nearest, you know, structure in the event something terrible would happen. And that, I think if you go to the next slide, will be the end of my comments, unless there are any questions, before I turn it over to Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Barth?
Back from the microphone.
No one ever told me to speak into a mic before.
Okay, we will take additional comments, then? Please, sir. Get into the nuances of how, however that was said.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm William Taylor, lawyer from Sioux Falls, and I represent Brightmark Athena. I've never appeared before you before, Commissioner Karski, but I know the rest of the commissioners have been here many times. I should say, my, by opening, it's fun to listen to Mr. Sutton's enthusiasm. I left Woods and Fuller six years ago to practice law with my son and Jeremy Duff. My son, John Taylor, is a contemporary of Mr. Sutton's, and maybe I should bow to the young guys and let them express their enthusiasm. Anyway, the Brightmark Athena Project. Brightmark is a nationwide company, or growing nationwide. It's been in the renewable energy business for a long time. Currently operates a facility that converts plastic to diesel fuel, and in the United States has 45 projects, similar to the project that's going on in Minnehaha County, either in operation, under construction, or in the design phases, in 12 states. The Brightmark biodigester methane capture systems, Mr. Sutton said it's cutting-edge, but the truth is, it's not. The city of Sioux Falls has captured methane for more than 30 years from its wastewater treatment plant, and uses that methane to power the electric generators, it provides all of the electricity for the system. There is a landfill methane capture system on the landfill in Sioux Falls, it's been in effect, I think, it's probably closing on 20 years, that captures the same gas and pipes methane gas to the ethanol plant at Chancellor, through the ditches about, I think it's a 12-mile pipeline. So, it's not cutting-edge, but it is modern. So, here's how it works. The Bowdine family has interests in three dairies in Minnehaha County. One is just north of the injection point, and a little to the west. Another is north and a little less to the west. And the third is on the Minnesota border, just north of Garrettson. I have a slide that shows the locations of the dairies, if you want to see it. I will put that into evidence. There are digesters being constructed on each of these dairies. The process is, is that the manure, as it's captured, before it goes to the settling ponds, passes through the digesters. The manure is heated to about 100 degrees. Its national, natural anaerobic process results, accelerates the production of methane. Otherwise, the methane would be produced in the settling ponds and go into the atmosphere. So, there's a dome over these digesters, just like on the wastewater treatment plants by the Great Bear. The dome captures the gas, the methane gas, it's lightly processed to remove moisture primarily, and remove a, a couple of components, and then it's compressed, and it will pass through pipelines that'll be constructed from the Minnesota, from the border by Minnesota, the Moody, which unfortunately is spelled M-O-O-O-D-Y. Mr. Bowdine explains it, they may have been drinking when they came up with that name. It passes from the Bowdine Dairy, westerly, or from the Moody Dairy, westerly, then there's a pipeline from the Pioneer Dairy, that runs up to the Bowdine Dairy, and then from the Bowdine Dairy, the two, the westbound pipeline, the eastbound pipelines connect, and then down to the injection point. Those pipelines will be constructed in the road ditches, we've worked with the county for permission, with the townships for permission. The pipelines are Part 192 certified, plastic, high-density polyethylene pipelines, the same stuff that you see throughout the city of Sioux Falls for natural gas distribution. Six-inch diameter, these pipelines will operate at about 70 to 90 pounds pressure. At the interconnection point, the biogas is injected into the Northern Natural Gas pipeline. At the same time, out of the Northern Natural Gas pipeline comes natural gas, which will pass through a second pipe that's parallel and constructed in the same trench as the biogas pipeline that goes back to the dairies. And that natural gas provides the heat source to raise the temperature to 100 degrees in the biodigesters. Mr. Sutton said that about 7,000 homes can be heated by the annual gas production. That's correct. To balance that, your website says there are about 6,100 homes in Minnehaha County outside of the organized communities. So, there's enough natural gas produced by this project to heat every home in Minnehaha County that's not inside of an organized community. It will capture the methane from about 8,500 cows. Nationwide, the Brightmark Projects will capture the methane from about 170,000 cows. Brightmark is not the only company in this business, there are dairies throughout South Dakota that are adding these types of facilities, dairies that primarily have access to interstate pipelines. Brightmark is also going to construct projects in Grant County, and, uh, near the ethanol plant at Chancellor in South Dakota. So, moving forward, we understand, and Brightmark wants to be a good neighbor, they want to get along with Mr. and Mrs. Workus, but there has to be a point where the gas is injected into the pipelines, and into the interstate pipeline, and where the gas is taken from the interstate pipeline. The Workus property, their, Mrs. Workus owns 6, 700 acres of agricultural property that runs north to south, starting just a quarter section north of where her house is, shown in the drawings that were up there, running down almost all the way to Baltic. The Northern Natural Gas Pipeline, which has been there since 1961, is a high-pressure, 800 pounds per square inch, 700, 800 pounds per square inch, about a two-and-a-half-inch diameter steel pipeline, runs through her backyard, about 200 feet from the house, and she has a farm tap off of that pipeline. For those of you that know, when the, when Northern's predecessor built those pipelines in the 60s, one of the accommodations they made for residents was to offer a farm tap, so a farmer could plug into the pipeline and take natural gas off of the pipeline. For a while, it was free. In more recent years, the, I think Mid-America is the supplier for the Workuses, which is a sister company to Northern Natural Gas. As we understand it, Mr. and Mrs. Workus have three concerns. One is visual, and we have done our dead-letter best to screen the property. We're going to, we've already contracted for, and I'll put into evidence and give you the bill, with a nursery at Brandon for $50,000 worth of trees to be planted around the project, which includes 10-to-12-foot-high spruces that are bag growing and be transplanted, 15-foot maples. So, they're concerned about visuality, and we will do our best to screen the project. They're concerned about noise. You heard Mr. Sutton say that our measurements are 70 dB at the property line, 70 decibels at the property line is equivalent, um, it's about 10 decibels less than a feed grinder, or a logger, or a grain dryer. It's about ten decibels less than a feed grinder or a logger or a grain dryer. Should point out to you that the property, the triangle, is owned by Nelson Farms, Inc. and under the zoning ordinance, as it's currently written, Nelson Farms, Inc. could do exactly what Brightmark is going to do on the property, that is, construct buildings. And they could do it without, it's a permissive use in Article Three of the ordinance, so they can do it without a building permit, that's all it takes. And Nelson Farms, for example, could have a grain storage facility there and run a grain dryer and a feed grinder if they wanted to, which is considerably noisier than what we propose to do. So they're concerned about visuality, they're concerned about noise, they're concerned about safety. And I should tell you that the, what the safety provisions are. The natural gas industry, and some of you know I've been in the pipeline business since the seventies. I worked for Williams Brothers, worked, at one time I worked for Northern. Most recently, I've been on the dark side and worked for Keystone XL Projects and to some extent Dakota Access. The gas pipeline industry is one of the most heavily regulated industries in the United States. FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission pursuant to Congress's directive under the Natural Gas Act in the sixties, adopted a set of regulations that comprehensively deal with the, how pipelines operate, the material that's involved in pipelines, comprehensive safety package with respect to natural gas pipelines. The Brightmark facility is an interstate pipeline. FERC regulates interstate pipelines, that is, pipelines that operate in more than one state. Northern operates throughout the corridor of the central part of the United States. Brightmark operates only in South Dakota, so Brightmark is regulated by South Dakota standards. Of course, FERC was not very trusting of the states when it enacted its regulations, so Congress said, "FERC, we're gonna let the states regulate interstate pipelines subject to your guidance." So FERC said, "Here are the comprehensive regulations for interstate pipelines. States, take these and enact them in your own system." So the state system administered by the Public Utilities Commission is identical to the federal system in terms of safety standards, so we meet all those qualifications. Safety-wise, my friends at Northern probably don't want me to say this, but there's probably more risk from the pipeline that runs through the Warkuses backyard than there is from the interconnection site that we want to build on this conditional use permit site. Now, we understand that there is a fourth element of concern on the part of Mr. and Mrs. Warkus. As I said, Mrs. Warkus owns about six, seven hundred acres of contiguous property that runs north and south. It's been expressed to us that she has fifteen building eligibilities on those acres. And that at some point in time, she would like to move those fifteen or some portion of those building eligibilities to the property where her house is located and build a real estate subdivision. We learned about that just a few days ago. Now, I'd point out that she has not yet done that. She has not, she has to have a conditional use permit to move those building eligibilities, just like we have to have a conditional use permit for this project. She's not yet done that. We respect her right to do that. We don't believe that this project will adversely influence any development that she chooses to make on her project. The visual impacts are small, the safety impacts are small. I would tell you that on the far south end of the property that she owns, it's just north of Baltic, immediately adjacent to the Baltic City Park, there's a Northern Natural Gas valve site, about half the size of this location, right next door to her property, near Baltic. And if you think about it, most people don't notice gas pipeline facilities unless they're in the gas pipeline business. But there are valve sites and pump stations on Northern's pipeline right-of-way every five, six miles. And Northern's pipeline right-of-way extends from the Permian Basin in Texas, up into Kansas, where there's a large natural gas storage facilities in the salt caverns, through Iowa, Nebraska, South Dakota, North Dakota, and parts of Minnesota. So these facilities, not dissimilar to the facility we propose, are scattered throughout the Midwest, and we don't even see them once we're used to them. I submit to you that I don't think there'll be any effect on the value of Mrs. Warkus' property or ability to build more houses or subdivide that property going forward. There are no offensive fumes, no offensive odor, no dust, minimal noise, no vibration, lighting is controlled. In your conditional use permit criteria in nineteen oh five of your ordinance, you say there are five points that need to be addressed, three of which apply to this property. The effect it'll have on the use of enjoy, an enjoyment of property in the surrounding area, we've addressed that. The effect of the normal, ordinary development and improvement of surrounding property for uses predominant in the area. The predominant use is agricultural. And your ordinance says that agricultural uses and housing uses are generally incompatible in the agricultural district. The third point, third test in your ordinance is that offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, lighting will be controlled, and that none of them constitute a nuisance. And I think we've addressed all of those points. The final point is the health, safety, general welfare of the public, and I think we've addressed those points. We believe that in partnership with Northern, it is entirely appropriate to use this property for a small-scale interconnection point between these two pipelines. I'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions? All right. Any first additional comments from the petitioner?
I should say that I have with me the two engineers from Brightmark who are managing this and who can address any question you want. One is the project manager, that is, the digester aspects, and the other is the pipeline and gas manager, Dan Kubicek and Ryan Berger.
Any additional proponent commentary? Okay. You hear to speak in favor of this, Mr. Meyer?
I have a comment on the project. That's okay.
Please.
I am not neither for or against it. I really don't have an interest in the project. But I have to commend Brightmark. If they're sincere about being neighborly, I have to commend them on that. They've addressed lighting, they've addressed noise, they've addressed traffic issues, they've addressed smell, and most of all, they've addressed preserving the site of rural America with their plans of what they're going to do to their neighbors, do for their neighbors to help lower the effect that this will have on their neighbors. Back to my earlier comments about Hartford and their sewings, they not only will not acknowledge their neighbors, they have offered us nothing. So I commend the company for that. The only thing I would add is they offer the Warkuses free natural gas for their inconvenience.
All righty. So we will now take comments from the opponent to the conditional use permit. Anybody here to speak against issuing this conditional use permit?
Good morning, Commissioners. Reese Allman with the Davenport Evans Law Firm here in Sioux Falls. With me are my clients Nicole and David Warkus. I will turn it over to them here momentarily, but first I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank Mr. Sutton and Mr. Taylor for their, their presentations. They were very informative, detailed, certainly did a very nice job. And I just want to say, this concept, this process that they're proposing of capturing methane to create into renewable gra, gas is certainly an admirable one. I don't think anyone here will disagree with that. Certainly, the Warkuses, I think, will agree that the concept, the process, is fantastic. But that's not the question for the Commissioners here today. The question is, is whether or not this public, public utility facility should be cited in this particular location, whether or not this project, this process, is suitable for this particular location. So the question's not about whether this is a good idea or a good project or a good process, but really, the question's about citing. Is this location, which is about five hundred and feet, five hundred feet away from the Warkuses residence, or as I call it, a par three away from their residence, is it appropriate to cite a public, public utility facility in that location? And we're going to present both practical reasons as well as a legal reason for you Commissioners to vote no on this, on this application. So first, let's talk about the practical reasons, which really focus on the conditional use permit criteria, the six criteria that are found in your guys' ordinances that Mr. Taylor just discussed on. So at this point, I'll, I'll turn it over to Nicole to talk and tell you guys about their property and about why this facility just isn't appropriate five hundred feet away from their residence.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just have to speak from the heart. I'm not a public speaker, I'm a nurse, so give me some grace. We have lived on our current property since two thousand seven. We bought the property with the current home at that time in two thousand six, moved our family out there, purchased it from my grandmother. The land around that has been in our family for nearly a century. In two thousand seventeen, we started assessing whether the current farmstead was sustainable, the house itself. Talked to many contractors, they said, you know, you'd be better off building. So we took our equity, tore it down, put it in a pile, buried it, and built a new home. We've put some of our life savings into this home. We don't have a second option. This is our forever home. We planned it meticulously out with the best views from the river, from looking to the east, looking to the south. The whole house is planned out as it should be, and moved back from the road, from the current existing house that was there. It was just a huge investment as we're middle-aged and we weren't planning on starting over, but we did. We have a friend who is employed with a local, a well-known auctioneer and brokerage agency that said, "You will take a hit on this property with a public utility facility going next to you." It is less than five hundred feet from our house. We do own the pasture right across from the road that we do use for recreational uses As Mr. Taylor addressed, we do have fifteen building eligibilities that if we were to develop, which is a possibility, would also take an equal hit. We're looking at a half a million dollars in loss. The property that would be developed would be behind our house. It actually sits on a hill that overlooks this entire project, so. The project that they want to build is not a horse stable, it is not a nice-looking structure. Even if it was a barn, we would not be opposed to this, but it's not a barn. It's on gravel, it is right next to the road, and it is within multiple views of our property. So aesthetically, like I said, from our front deck that we built, we can see it from the side and from our back patio. We will be able to see it. It'll be raised out of the floodplain, at least three feet above floodplain. The buildings are, I believe, eight foot tall, they told us. And even though it's agriculture use property, it has, it's a wildlife preserve, home to many eagles, it's a natural setting, and we have done everything we can do to preserve the Big Sioux River. There's no, I mean, no amount of promised trees can secure the view. As far as noise is concerned, there, there are compressors on this. I, I have to argue that they're, they're probably not going to be as quiet as a lawnmower running. There's also generators. We like to have our windows open, our master bedroom faces that way, master bathroom, hard downstairs windows. And there is also concern with lighting, even though they say there won't be any lights on at any point. And again, I just don't know what this will do for safety. You'd have to picture yourself in our home and who's going to secure our safety. Brightmark owns a plastic factory, recyclable plastic factory in Ashley, Indiana. They've already had a huge fire there. I mean, things happen, catastrophic events happen, leaks happen. Who's going to be responsible for those health issues, those extending things? And I would ask Brightmark if they've ever built this close to a residence before, because I don't believe they have. They're, lastly, they're building a known floodplain. We live on four seventy-third, that is the main road from the Baltic Highway to the Colton Blacktop, is highly traveled. It has been closed every decade. There's no such thing as a five-year, five-hundred-year flood. There are permanent floodgates at the end of our road and in the middle. There have been at times one way in and out of our, to our residence. So, for safety-wise, for EMS to get to our house, it is, has been difficult. It will flood again. So I would just ask that you consider us in making your decision.
Thank you, Nicole. So those are kind of the practical reasons, and just to kind of recap, touching on the criteria found in Section nineteen point oh five of your guys' ordinances. Number one is the effect upon the use and enjoyment of surrounding properties. The one that, I guess myself am kind of focused on is that seventy-decibel noise at the road. It's a vacuum cleaner, which doesn't sound like a lot during the day when the wind is blowing, but at ten PM, eleven PM, midnight, when the windows are open in the summertime trying to sleep, that vacuum cleaner, I think, is going to be a little bit more frustrating or annoying than, than is being accredited by, by, by the petitioner. Number one also talks about the effect upon the property values. You just heard she spoke with an appraiser, auctioneer, who's indicated that there will be a decrease in their property values. Section two, or subpart, subpart two of Section nineteen point oh five talks about the effect upon the development and improvement of surrounding vacant property. You heard about potential plans to be building a development in the surrounding vacant property. And the question is, is whether residences in ag land is more suitable than a public utility facility. I think you only need to look at your ordinances to see whether a residence is a permitted use and a public utility facility is a conditional use. So I, I would argue residences are more favorable in the agricultural district than a public utility facility. So in looking at number two, I think that factor favors in voting no on this project. Factor three talks about access roads and drainage. You just heard about the constant flooding that occurs on these access roads, which would potentially limit the access to this public utility facility. Subpart five talks about the noise lighting to ensure that they won't constitute a nuisance. Again, I'll point back to that seventy-decibel noise. Again, I'll point back to that 70 decibel noise. And finally, the health, safety, general welfare of the public. That this is in a floodplain is very concerning. You're taking natural gas, a highly explosive material, injecting it into another pipe, and you're doing that within a floodplain. Again, the question's not about whether this project is a good idea. It's whether this site is appropriate for the project. So again, it's in a floodplain, injecting a highly flammable subject or material in a floodplain just doesn't make sense. So those are the practical reasons why I would argue the Commission should vote no on this project. But I also have a legal reason why I believe the Commission frankly has to vote no, given the language of your guys' ordinances. So this is a conditional use permit for a, quote, "public utility facility," end quote. That is a defined term within your guys' ordinances. Public utility facility is defined in Article 26 with all of your definitions. And the definition of a public utility facility is a C neighborhood utility facilities. So it just refers to neighborhood utility facilities. Only difference between a neighborhood utility facility and a public utility facility is the size of buildings. If they're going to be large buildings, it's a public utility facility. If the buildings are small, it's a neighborhood utility facility. So then we need to look at the definition of neighborhood utility facility, which is found in Subpart 480 of Article 26. And that definition says, quote, "Telephone, electric, and cable television lines, poles and equipment, water or gas pipes, mains and valves, sewer pipes and valves, lift stations, telephone exchanges and repeaters, and all other facilities and equipment necessary for conducting a service by a government or a public utility." That's the key language in the ordinance for the definition of a public utility facility. It needs to be a government or a public utility. Well, the applicant here is Northern Natural Gas. Northern Natural Gas is neither a government nor public utility facility. If I may approach Commissioners, I have an exhibit here. It's interesting that Mr. Taylor brought up the farm taps, because five years ago, the Verkas' found themselves in a dispute because their farm taps were getting shut off. And this dispute ended up in front of the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission. Northern Natural Gas was a party to that dispute at the Public Utilities Commission. What you're looking at in front of you is a submission by Northern Natural Gas to the Public Utilities Company. And I would refer, draw your attention to Page 3, 12, 14, 16, and 19 of that exhibit. I have highlighted the portions of that exhibit I want to draw your attention to. Northern Natural Gas has taken the position, and continues to take the position, according to my conversation with PUC staff attorneys, that it is not a public utility. Because it does not want to be under the jurisdiction of the South Dakota PUC. So if it's not a public utility company, it cannot apply for a public utility facility conditional use permit. So for that legal reason, this applicant cannot receive a conditional use permit for a public utility facility per the language of the Minnehaha County zoning ordinances. So for both the practical reasons that we've talked about, as well as that legal reason, I would ask that the Commissioners vote no on this conditional use permit. And that is our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
You know, to the Verkas', you guys live about a mile and a half from the interstate. Do you hear that? You don't? Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Any other testimony in opposition to this conditional use permit? Anybody else here like to present? Now we have time for a rebuttal from the petitioner.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jason Sutton, again, appearing on behalf of Northern Natural Gas. I'm not going to dive into everything Mr. Allman said. And I appreciate the comments of the Verkas', and I appreciate his comments. There is the legal issue I want to address, that he just handed to you a initial brief of Northern Natural Gas Company filed before the Public Utilities Commission of the State of South Dakota in PUC Docket NG 1614. I'm familiar with this brief, because I wrote it. And I will note to you, when you look at it, Page 3, Mr. Allman highlights. Please turn there, if you will, with me, Commissioners. He highlights Northern is not a public utility, but then he stopped his highlighting, "subject to the jurisdiction of the SDPUC, the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission." Here's what that really is. Northern is an interstate pipeline. In other words, their pipes start and run between multiple states. What that means, as a public utility, the issue is about who gets to regulate them. The South Dakota Public Utilities Commission, no, because they're outside South Dakota. Makes sense. We don't want Minnesota saying that, hey, pipelines in South Dakota can't do X. Similarly, in Kansas, Minnesota, they don't want the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission saying, "Your pipe that runs across state lines can't do X." Instead, the question is, who is the regulatory agency? It's the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, that Mr. Taylor talked about. So I would submit to you this legal argument, which is the first time we saw it. Now, I will acknowledge that I did not confirm for counsel for the Verkas' until this morning exactly who signed the applicant. It was on behalf of Northern. We did meet with them last week. This is the first time any of us have heard this issue. They didn't object at the Planning Commission, and it's misdirection. That is not what this says. Northern Natural Gas is a utility. They meet the definitions. That's why the Planning, zoning acknowledge it. We would ask that you grant the conditional use permit with the conditions suggested by planning and zoning. The only other comment I would make, because I don't know that it's came out in the discussion with the noise, I just want to make sure that it's for the benefit of the Commission and that it's clear, you know, Mrs. Verkas' mentioned compressors and generators. Those actual facilities are in the sheds. So I want you to keep that in mind. They're enclosed. And then it's 70 decibels 500 feet from their house, over a football field away. So just so that's clear, those are the only comments I have. And additional issues, I'm not sure Mr. Taylor, I suspect will. If you have any questions for myself or Northern Natural Gas, please let us know, and we'll do our best to answer them.
Thanks. I just want to talk about a couple of points. Mr. Sutton said, "We met with the Verkas', and that's true." We met with the Verkas' about a week ago, and we told them then, and I'll tell you now. Brightmark wants to be a good neighbor. We will accept any reasonable condition that's appropriate to impose on this conditional use permit. And we told that to the Verkas', and we asked the Verkas' if you have conditions that you think are not already covered by the Planning Commission recommendation, tell us what they are, so we can evaluate them. No response. Mr. Allman's a gifted lawyer. I complimented him the other day on the fact that he turned around the Brandon City Council about two weeks ago on an annexation proposition that nobody, I think, has ever accomplished before, and at least in my living memory, in South Dakota. He's a gifted lawyer. He makes great arguments. But there are some very practical points that counter his arguments. The noise issue. He mentions a generator and a compressor. The generator doesn't operate. The generator's there, so if there's a power failure, the generator can come on and keep the compressor running for safety reasons, so that the gas is compressed and goes into the Northern Pipeline and vice versa. Noise attenuation. Decibel measurement is a dark science. We want to think of decibel measurement as geometric. 100 is loud. 50 isn't as loud. 10 isn't as loud as 50. But it's not a geometric progression as decibels fall off. It's the, I can't ever remember the word. It's, the engineers can tell me, it's the reverse of exponential. There is an attenuation. That is, 70 decibels is an order of magnitude less than 150 and so forth. And noise is attenuated by distance, because, as I learned in the Army, sound waves, are they similar to radio waves? And they attenuate as their bandwidth widens with the passage of distance and time, and they're affected by wind and temperature. So 70 decibels at the property line is a far cry from 70 decibels at their house. The floodplain issue. Yes, we're going to raise one corner of the site, so that it's above the FEMA floodplain. Couple of feet, not raising the entire site many feet above the floodplain. I omitted to mention that there is, among the safety considerations, a SCADA system. SCADA is a data capturing system. It's a state-of-the-art safety system, both on Northern and on the Brightmark facilities. And it tests and measures all the data produced by the system and identifies anomalies. So if there's a leak, you know, there's an anomaly, and you shut down. If there's an overpressure situation and so forth. The state-of-the-art stuff. This facility will be as safe as any facility can be. Again, any condition that's reasonable. And yes, it's true, Mr. Allman argues that Northern is not a public utility. I wasn't involved in the proceeding that Mr. Sutton was involved in. But since 2010, I think I've spent 30, maybe 40 days in trial before the Public Utilities Commission over what constitutes a public utility and its regulation. They may not, Northern may not be regulated for some purposes by the Public Utilities Commission, but they are by others. And if Northern isn't a public utility, I think Warren Buffett would sit up behind his chair and say, "Why did I buy that company for Berkshire Hathaway? It's clearly a public utility in South Dakota." Thank you.
Any other rebuttals from the proponents? Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. I will, any questions from the Commission? Speak now. Alrighty. Comments from the Commission?
I'll wait for others to speak, but I have some thoughts.
I guess I do have one question. I'm just a little vague on it. The 70 decibels, that's measured at the fence that's around the buildings that are on the site? Is that where that 70? And is that a continuous sound, or is that from compressors running? Or is that intermittent? If you'd step forward and identify yourself, sir.
Good morning. I'm Joel Glance, project manager from Omaha, Nebraska. The 70 decibels is based on a look at two main components. The control valves, which are housed in a building, and the compressor. Both of those are housed within buildings and structures. Maximum, excuse me, the values given are at like 100% flow for the control valves, which will not always be there, so it's an intermittent rating. The compressor will not always be running. So 70 decibels is the maximum estimated decibel reading at the fence. And as Mr. Taylor said, it's a logarithmic function. It drops off exponentially as distance is increased.
So it's at the fence that's around the structures?
Correct.
Okay. And does that factor in the trees that are going to be around there?
Does not.
Does not? Okay.
And we do have the ability to take measurements and add additional insulation if readings are excessive, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just would make a comment about a normal speaking voice is 60 decibels.
Commissioner Rehberger?
It's no fun to ever be the first person. And I will tell you, I have several judge friends because of this job. And I always tell them, "I don't ever want to be a judge. It's not any fun." But in this particular capacity, we sit as the jury and the judge, and it isn't any fun. It's very stressful. Just a couple thoughts, is, you know, I have a page full of notes. A couple things is, you know, there was a question about the access. But looking at this map, I would propose, and I would ask somebody to shoot holes in it. If I'm wrong, is at 249, you could come from the other direction, and you would still have access to the site without being flooded out. So, okay, so you could, can I ask him that question?
Why not?
I want to ask you that question, so. Because you can't come up and speak unless I ask you to, so.
The highway that they would have to come from, coming out of Baltic, goes underwater also a lot of the time, so they would, you would be able to get there. But getting a fire truck there, they have to go all the way around. And the highway north of us gets underwater also. So you have to pretty much, it's from our house to Baltic, it's eight miles, if everything's underwater.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So basically, I felt like that was addressed, because they don't have to come right by the Sioux River. And I am familiar with the Baltic Road. I wish this was a little bit bigger, so you could see exactly where it was at, but it's not. And the floodplain, you guys addressed that there's only one quarter, but you're raising about three feet. The noise issue, I have a very large generator, because I'm a rural resident, on my property. And when my generator runs, I literally have to go outside. It sits right outside my garage, so it's next to my house. I have to go outside to hear if the generator's running when we have a power outage. The electricity will sometimes just bleep, and I'm like, "Did we really lose power?" And so I have to step outside to see if my generator's even running, because it is so quiet. Now, I don't know how big yours is. Mine's large, and I can't hear it inside my house at all. And I can't, from where my bedroom is, it's not on the same size as yours, but I can't hear it from my bedroom, which is on the opposite side of the house, is my generator. But I still can't hear it. If there's a storm and the electricity goes out, I can't hear it. Future development, you know, we'll have to go through the same process as far as a PUC and everything else. And, I mean, there's a whole lot involved in that whole thing, so I don't even know where, you know, future commissions would be on that. Putting 15 building eligibility's in one spot, I don't know how that is. I do know of ones that have had four building eligibility's moved. I've never seen one, but I haven't been here forever, so. See if there was anything else. Those are the ones that I have answered thus far. The one about the public utilities. I guess I've always been under the assumption that you guys are public utilities, because it is an interstate kind of public utilities. It isn't just a South Dakota issue. And so that wasn't an issue to me. So I'll leave it at that. Those are my comments thus far. I would look forward to my other Commissioners' comments.
Well, I will tell you, and excuse me, I apologize for leaving a couple of times. I think you addressed the visuality and the noise. I have to tell you that I was involved in the...
I have to tell you that I was involved in the methane gas conversation with then the Brine Group to the processing plant, ethanol processing plant. So my biggest concern at the beginning of this conversation was about safety, and I don't believe there's been any safety-related issues with that relationship. It's been a very positive for the city of Sioux Falls, been very positive for the ethanol plant. I also believe that Northern is a public utility company. It's on the stock exchange. So the only question that I might add, that I heard a little bit about, was the building eligibility thing. There may be some issues with, frankly, the floodplain and future conversations, but that is not part of this particular discussion. So I would support the fact that the planning commission made the right approval. I do apologize for my sinus infection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, being on planning and zoning, I frequently have issues like this come forward. And I'll tell you, I've been to that corner. There's an incredible irrigation structure right on that corner. If you've not been there, go and look right at 269 or whatever, 248 and whatever, 473. It was built, obviously, during the 20s or something. Parts are missing, water's flowing. Anyway, it's, I lived here for, you know, 37 years before I found it, and it was only by accident. Anyway, it's a very interesting location, and, you know, commonly, people opposing a project will say it's a great project, it's the wrong location. It's a great idea to have a water tower, but it should be 1,500 feet down the hill. It's a great idea to have a cell tower, but it shouldn't be here. And so, you know, wherever it goes, people aren't going to like it. And again, you know, it's, things change. There, you know, the river might change course. It might become part of the city of Sioux Falls and have another Amazon building in the area. The, there's a gas facility down by Baltic on the blacktop there across, south of the park. There are houses directly across the street. People were not afraid to live there. And clearly, there's always a concern, but I'll tell you what, as we approve these things around the county, people adjust to them without too much trouble. I know that it, in the planning process, it seems like an eyesore, but once it's there, people don't really notice it that much. And as far as noise, there's always going to be noise. I can hear Hewsett's racetrack eight miles away at my house every now and then if the wind is right, and certainly I hear motorcycles regularly. But anyway, I, 473 does flood regularly. I've met with township officials in 2019. I think that they had to block it off south of there about four or five times and lost a bunch of gravel. It's an interesting location, but again, I, you know, I wonder if, you know, traditionally, farmers had big red barns. I wonder if they enclosed these buildings in a big red barn, if that would be something that they would prefer.
Commissioner Garcia.
Commissioner.
It's interesting you said that, because you said that if it was a barn, you'd be happier, and I just wondered if it was a red siding instead of blue and tan and was red with trim, it would look more like a barn in the neighborhood than a utility building, if that would at least be helpful, if you changed the color of the, I know that's minimal. But they did say a barn, and they do look more like barns if they're red and white, so. I thought.
Mr. Chairman, one other point I'd like to make.
Please.
Is that it's zoned ag, it's not zoned museum. Things will change.
And that's, you know, I've been doing this for 10 years plus, between the city council and the county commission, so between forgiving county liens, clearing public nuisances and conditional use permit appeals, we're firing on all cylinders today, so it's been an interesting day. We've definitely have earned our keep and our time on the county commission. One thing about property ownership, and I made the comment to the individual that we were.
Nuisance?
Yeah, the public nuisance. I respect property rights, and with property rights, ownership is paramount. And if you own the property, there's a process to go through to make sure that what you want to do on that property is acceptable by most standards. And not everybody's going to agree that everything is ideal or acceptable, but in the 10 years and the, I don't, countless numbers of rezones and appeals and other things, I have not seen any of the worst-case outcomes or scenarios that people imagine, whether it be an apartment building being put where you didn't want it, or a CAFO. I mean, typically, things do work out to Commissioner Barr's point that it's not the end of the world. And I am in favor of upholding the planning commission's position on this, and I would look for a motion. I guess what I'm going to look for a motion to do is to go into executive session.
For motion to go into executive session?
So move, second.
Alrighty. So we are going to, we are going to...
All those in favor.
I'm sorry?
All those in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those same sign motion carries. We're going to go into executive session for 10 to 15 minutes, I'd imagine.
How about we just go in there, that way everybody can stay?
Okay, everybody can stay here, we get to go in the other room.